All right, it is six o'clock and we will bring the City of West Melbourne Regular Council Meeting to order this Tuesday, August 19th, 2025. Will you please stand for the pledge? And a moment of silence. You may be seated. All right, welcome to the City of West Melbourne Regular Council Meeting tonight. Members of the public are welcome to speak on any topic, whether it is on tonight's agenda or any other issue that is important to you. Each person that wishes to speak should complete a speaker card, which are located by the door, and submit it ahead of time to the clerk who sits at the end of the dais. After you have been recognized to speak, please use the microphone at the podium and clearly state your name and address for the record. Please address all your comments to the city council rather than to individual members. Direct all questions to the chair. Speakers will be given up to three minutes to speak. Thank you. All right, we have a few things to do here. Do some presentations and proclamations. The first one will be to Keith Jordan. Do you join me down front? Next one, Jim Lisenfeld. I know he's here, I saw him. There you are. Thank you very, very much. This is our token of appreciation for the 19 years that you have spent on our planning and zoning board. We appreciate it very, very much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for all the work that you put into it. This is a clock, it's even set to the correct time, there's even a battery, not one of those batteries not included things, the battery's even in here. So, we were trying to figure out what kind of time this was on here because it kind of goes backwards and we figured you would probably know that. It's not military time, I don't know what it is.
Oh, it is backwards, but it is.
Well, then just forget it this way.
Yeah, I don't know, okay, I was gonna say military, but yeah, it is backwards.
Did you want to say a few words? It's not like you're shy.
Yeah, okay, sorry. Well, first of all, thank you for everyone coming out just for me, so I appreciate that, so. Right? Actually, we got to see heritage jokes quite a bit on planning zoning, but no, thank you very much for the recognition. I was honored to serve for all the many years. We believe very strongly in public service and working in the public sector and the family. My wife's here, she's been a public school teacher. She won't let me tell you how long because that would give away her age. But, so we do volunteer quite a bit in the community and thought this was a great opportunity. I was very happy to serve and thank you very much for voting me in all those different terms. Thank you very much.
We have the box to do. There you go. Very borrowed.
Do you want to have our picture taken?
Yes. All right, there you are. Thank you very much. As I said, she has the box. All right, the last one is a proclamation because this is water appreciation. So, Tim Tebner? The whole group? Yes, please, the whole group. Thank you very much for bringing the whole group. This is a great bunch of guys.
It is.
These are the great guys, when you push the one button, the water goes away, and when you push the other button, it fills up again. So, these are the guys that make that happen. So, thank you very, very much, thank you. So, this is our proclamation for them. Whereas clean and safe water is essential to the public health, environmental protection, and the economic vitality of our communities and whereas, as defined by the Florida State Statute 4038850, don't quote me on that, water professionals are essentially first responders during storms and other catastrophic events as they work diligently to ensure safe drinking water and safe disposal of wastewater for our communities and whereas their expertise and commitment safeguard public health by preventing waterborne illnesses, protecting the quality of Florida's water resources, and promoting water sustainability and conservation. And whereas these dedicated professionals work tirelessly to operate and maintain complex infrastructure, uphold regulatory compliance, and respond to emergencies, often behind the scenes and without public recognition. And whereas the state of Florida and its municipalities benefit from the knowledge, integrity, and surface of these operators who stand as stewards of our most precious resource. And whereas, since its founding in 1940, the Florida Water and Pollution Control Operators' Association has been playing a critical role in ensuring the effective treatment and management of our water and wastewater systems through operator training courses, certification programs, and continuing education to operator license renewal. Now, therefore, be proclaimed that the mayor and city council of the City of West Melbourne, Brevard County, Florida hereby proclaim August 25th as Florida Water Professionals Month. In the City of West Melbourne, and I encourage all citizens to recognize and thank the water and pollution control professionals for their dedication in maintaining their safety, reliability, and sustaining our water systems. Witness my hand and seal the city this date, the 19th day of August, 2025. Good? All right, item D is the Youth Advisory Board applicants for consideration. Megan Alexander's going to handle this.
Thank you, Mayor. As the council will remember, this was an initiative by council member Diana Adams, and the council actually ended up passing a resolution in June that adopted the Youth Advisory Board. As you all are aware, the purpose of this board is they are to serve as a voice for the youth, they're to promote civic responsibility and contribute to the betterment of the community. It will be seven resident members, and the members of the board are between 14 and 17 years old, and they will each serve for two-year terms. So, all of the seats are vacant because this is a brand-new board, and we have one of the young ladies in the audience tonight, the one of the board members, well, potential board members, Danielle Tulo takes classes because she wants to finish her college degree early, which was something not offered to me, and I would have appreciated that at the time. And I'll tell you a little bit about Danielle since she's not here. You all have her application and her resume. She is, as I said, getting her Associate's of Art degree, and she wants to get a Bachelor's or a Master's in either political science or agriculture. She has goals for this committee that include financial literacy presentations that she thinks she would be helpful to the young people, career exploration fairs, and she wants to do civic outreach so that students will become more involved in the operations of their government. She received, which is pretty prestigious, she received the President's Volunteer Service Award in 2019 when she worked for the Central Brevard Sharing Center, and she also, this is just a very short list because she's very accomplished, Future Leaders Program at Max Road Park. So, she's very active in the community, and if the council would like, you can consider her. The reason why she's not here is her classes are on Tuesday and Thursday nights. And then we also have in the audience is our second applicant, oh, excuse me, is Juliet Baker, and Juliet is in the audience if you'd like to speak to her about her. I see one person nodding vigorously, so Juliet, if you could come to the mic.
Welcome.
Hi, my name's Juliet.
Can you speak into the mic?
Hi, my name's Juliet. I'm 14 years old. I attend ninth grade at West Shore Junior Senior High School. I would like you to consider me for the Youth Advisory Board. You know, I want to get into politics. I plan on getting a degree in political science or education. I try to be very involved with my community. I play soccer competitive, and I have done many musical theater productions.
Okay, thank you, thank you very, very much. Any questions from the?
Just a comment, not a question. I spent 40 years at Harris evaluating folks and going through resumes and hiring people. You and the other person that's running did an incredible job on your write-ups. I mean, I've gone through a lot of write-ups and resumes in my life, but you two stand out as someone that's at your grade level, and you've written this better than college students do when I see there. So, fantastic job on the application form itself for both of you guys, it's just outstanding.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. Juliet, thank you so much for applying. I agree with the deputy mayor, your application was very well done, as was the other one that we received. I just made a couple notes, and I know you had highlighted some of them, but not only your dedication to your schoolwork as you went through your schooling, but also, you know, I highlighted you're balancing things like theater, soccer, you did over 150 hours with the Humane Society. That's a very well-rounded student, in my opinion, and your desire to serve your community. I just thank you and applaud you because I think that's going to not only make a difference here in our community, but I think it's going to help you grow as a student, as a resident, and that's really exciting for me. So, I just wanted to share those thoughts with you. I'd also, if the council doesn't mind, like to make a motion to approve both of our applicants for the Youth Advisory Board.
All right, thank you. That'll be, motion, Ms. Adams, Mr. Frampton?
I'll second with a question.
Please.
My concern is, I know you guys are very busy. Your ability to commit time to this new committee is going to be very important, and I want to make sure that your schedule's not so busy, that you're not going to be able to commit the amount of time that this is probably going to take to get up and running and running well. So, do you have that time and are you going to be able to do it?
I do. I'm currently taking a break from soccer, I got injured, but I definitely do have that time.
Thank you, Juliet. And I do have some, has anybody on council talked to, is it Danielle?
I have not.
I called, but there was no answer, so I was going to try again in a day or two.
I kind of think it's important that we actually talk to these individuals. It's a new committee, and maybe if you could reach out and talk to them, it might be important to this committee just to ensure that they have the time to put into it and just, you know, it's, they got to write up procedures, you're going to have a whole lot of work to do in the beginning, and I just want to make sure that, you know, they're going to be right for the board. So, I, I, I'll keep my second on Ms. Baker here, but I don't, I don't support not talking to the other one first before we bring them on. So, if somebody else wants to second it, that's fine for both, but I'm not comfortable with that. Thank you.
All right, so you're withdrawing your second if the motion is both at the same time?
Yes.
Do you want to amend the motion and just do one at a time? You just want to do both at the same time, so you're different, Ms. Volz?
I will second the motion for both.
Okay, and you had a question as well?
And I also want to say that one, just thinking, when I was 13, you, young lady, see, I get emotional. Your age group in doing what you're doing, this is what this generation needs, is people like you, and I just think that we are so blessed just to have you apply for the position that it's just incredible. Thank you. And thank your parents because obviously your parents raised you right.
All right, thank you. We have a motion on the floor from Ms. Adams, we have a second from Ms. Volz. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion carries six to one. Thank you very, very much, Juliet, thank you. Thank you for joining the group, welcome and congratulations.
Yes.
All right, next is item E, Code Enforcement Board Alternate Position. Ms. Alexander?
Thank you again. The applicant that we have for the alternate position available on the Code Enforcement Board is Linda Smurra, who almost goes without any introduction because I am sure you all know her and know how incredibly active she is in the community. One thing that I did not know about her was that she had served on the Code Enforcement Committee for the Falls at Sheridan HOA in 2023. So, in addition to all of her incredible activity at the park, she also does have specific experience in this type of board, and she also attended the Citizens Police Academy in 2023. So, if you would like, she can come up to the mic, she is present this evening, and she can tell you why she should be selected as an alternate. Or just select her.
Ms. Murra, would you like to come up and speak?
Hi, my name is Linda Smurra, and I live at 679 Linville Falls Drive. I don't know what else to say.
Okay, well, we have some questions here for you. Ms. Volz, your light is on. Mr. Frampton, your light is on.
Linda, welcome. I know you do a lot with the rec board and you're always involved in stuff, and I'd like and I'd be proud to make a motion to add Mrs. Smurra for the Code Enforcement Board Alternate.
All right, thank you. Ms. Maguire?
Very happy to second that motion.
All right, thank you. We have a motion on the floor from Mr. Frampton, we have a second from Ms. Maguire. All those in favor of appointing Ms. Smurra as the alternate for the Code Enforcement Board, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you and welcome, Linda, we're very happy to have you. All right, next item is Waste Management. Mr. Ode.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. Based on a previous discussion, we had requested that the representatives from Waste Management come to a council meeting. We've, we've been struggling with certain areas of the community regarding the yard waste piles getting picked up and really trying to get the word out to our residents that they need to call in those piles, and then additionally getting the word out to better communicate the difference between a small yard pile that goes in your brown container versus a large clam truck pile that the truck needs to come and get. And so, we've been struggling with those challenges, and we met with Waste Management and had some good conversations, but per direction, we've requested that they come. We are, we are joined here by Waste Management. If you want to come to the microphone and introduce yourselves to the council, and I think we'll take it from there.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council, Jordan Chandler, Government Affairs Manager for WM, and have with us Luigi Pace, he speaks a lot nicer than I do, I apologize, with WM. And happy to answer any questions, if there are any.
I need some light, oh, Ms. Volz?
Yes, I don't know whether you ever go through nextdoor.com and look at the complaints for Waste Management there, there's a lot of them. People have left stuff in their yards, in the front yards, they've called and called and called, and nobody seems to pick up, and there was so many that it just, it's like it's not like Waste Management to not pick up. And so, I don't know what's going on, but it just seemed like that there was something off.
Yeah, and to answer that, first and foremost, have not had opportunity. I've been in this role, Dana Ryder Hicks was previously in this role, she received a promotion in WM, she's moved to North Carolina, so I now have been in this particular role exactly four months now. And so, but to your point, have seen a number of complaints that have come in, to Mr. Ode's point, relative to yard waste piles, and so we have worked diligently with Mr. Ode, we've met with the mayor, we've also talked with Deputy Mayor Bentley, who has done a phenomenal job in assisting us and going through the community and compiling a list of piles that are out there. And so, I can assure you that we are working very diligently to address all of the concerns that come in, and, you know, we're more than happy to continue to be a good partner, and, but I will make sure that I tune into Next Door so that we can be a little bit more proactive in addressing those concerns that come from the residents.
Thank you. Mr. Bentley, followed by Ms. Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I've met, as well as Tim, has met with these gentlemen on several occasions, at least two, and kind of walked through some issues that we've seen throughout the city. And to be fair, half the, half the responsibility, I think, is the City of West Melbourne's. We have to somehow improve the process, and right now, folks that are used to having things picked up that you laid out by the street, whether it be just a few branches or something, and if it's less than three cubic feet, they don't pick it up unless it's in the brown lid container. Not everybody's used to that. If you drive up and down, for example, Sheridan Road, you will see five or six houses, before today, you will see five or six houses that just have yard trash out there, and they don't know that they have to call in the Waste Management. I've actually stopped and talked to the residents. So, we've sent out multiple notices, but somehow it's not getting to everybody, so somehow we've got to fix that part of the system. We've also asked Waste Management to look at doing an extra run on things that are over the square footage requirement, and not necessarily having people call in, we need to work through that issue, but we've asked them to look at a specific trade that will allow a little bit of the old way it used to be and the new way that it currently is with the current contract. So, folks may not know, but about, less than a year ago, I guess, we entered into a new contract, and it has different stipulations in, and it's been difficult on our side to work through those stipulations and to get everything picked up. But these guys have actually been really good to work with, you know, I want to make that known, that Waste Management's trying to respond, they're trying to do a good job on everything, and, and so they've got some things that they, we hope that they can look at, and we as a city certainly have some things that we need to look at, and I don't know if Mr. Ode wants to comment as well.
Yeah, we, you know, the brown carts have gone over very well. The challenge has been, you know, for many years, it was you put any kind of yard debris in your front yard, whether it was one palm prawn, or, you know, you and your family cut a whole tree down, you know, over the weekend and put it out, and Waste Management would come with the clam or with rear-loaded garbage trucks and would... come with the clam or with rear-loaded garbage trucks and would remove that debris. And when we went to the brown lid, you know, the small debris needs to go in the brown lid every week. It gets picked up. It's on the schedule. But what we're struggling to is we're struggling to get the word out to people that they need to call in or go to the website and get signed up to get that yard debris, that clam pile, the three cubic yard clam pile, picked up. And so we've been doing multiple efforts. We've put it in the weekly roundup. We've put it in two different rounds of the water bill, the newsletter. We're trying to get that word out and trying to improve it. But the question is, you know, will we get the word out effectively enough? Or as Deputy Mayor Bentley mentioned, you know, we have started some conversations with Waste Management that maybe looking at a little bit of a hybrid option of keeping the brown carts, but then having more of a routed clam truck. But either way, we got to continue to get the word out. I think in addition to that, we've also put Code Enforcement on the piles. And so Code Enforcement went out with what we call cart hangers. They look like door hangers, but they hang on your garbage cart, letting people know that they, you know, they write on the back and let people know, hey, you got to call this pile in. You got to take some action in order to get this picked up. And so we've had a multi-pronged approach to try to get the word out. Unfortunately, it's hard to get that change. And so one of the things I think Waste Management is going to work on for us is taking a look at a hybrid approach and, you know, whether that has some cost or what that cost would be to go to that and take a look at that option, give some more information to the council at a later date, and see if we can solve this problem. Because I think, I think everybody, you know, the city, Waste Management, and the residents all want the same thing. They want their pile picked up. Nobody disputes that. Waste Management has never shirked their responsibility to pick those piles up. You know, they know that any pile in West Melbourne, a yard debris, they got to get at some point, you know, one time or another, they're going to have to come and get that. So they've never sidestepped that responsibility at all. It's just been the challenge of the people putting those into the system at Waste Management so Waste Management can route the right resources to get those picked up, and then people not putting them in and wondering why they don't get picked up. And so now that it's become a little bit of a time commitment extra for the city staff and/or take those phone calls and help people or put those requests in ourselves as staff, we want to take a look at some different options and see if the council might be amenable to that. And so I don't know if you want to add anything else to that, Deputy Mayor or Mayor?
Are you finished, Mr. Bentley? Ms. Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Chandler, I'm assuming, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm just curious. West Melbourne is or is not the only city in Bribard where you're having the challenges of pickup? And then the second follow-up to that, and yes, there's a third, but I'll just start with my first two. Why are we seeing the delays that we're seeing where residents are sometimes waiting weeks for a pickup that I know for a fact, because I've called the city, I've spoken to our different people that then contact Waste Management to say, hey, I've called about this residence pickup a couple of weeks ago. It's still there, and it was done correctly. You guys just haven't been around to pick it up. Is it a truck issue? Is it a workforce issue? What is causing the delay that was not expected?
Yeah, I would say ultimately, it's multifaceted. But number one, to answer your first question, on-call does appear to be a challenge through some other communities. You know, once again, to the Deputy Mayor's point, you know, we have, and the city has as well, tried to effectively communicate that these piles must be called in. And so we just have a little bit more work to do to be able to get residents there. So I would say this challenge is not specifically only germane to the city of West Melbourne. We also do see it in some other areas, municipalities that we service. To answer your second question, there...
Mind if I stop you a second? You didn't answer her first question. You talked around her first question. She said it was all done right by the resident, and you guys didn't fulfill your obligation. She wants to know what you're doing about your obligation.
That was the second portion.
I don't think he got to the second part yet. The first part, the first part was, is this only a West Melbourne issue, or is this happening elsewhere in Bribard?
Thank you. To answer the second question, we have looked at a number of things on our end. Obviously, it's a perfect institution that happened by imperfect people, right? Equipment sometimes breaks down, trucks break down, which can cause delays and routes. Sometimes, unfortunately, people call out. Another thing that I have seen in the last couple of months is we also have a regional office, customer service office. And one thing that we're doing is this knowledge-based review with that regional office. Sometimes tickets are put in. So say, for example, a resident gets a hold of the regional office, customer service. A ticket is put in, but unfortunately, say if it was July 31st, it was put in. Unfortunately, they may not have dispatched it until a week and a half, two weeks later, which is an issue. And so some of those tickets we have caught, and we're ultimately working with this regional office, customer service office, to remedy that and make sure that they have the correct language per the contract to make sure that they're servicing these piles as expeditiously as possible. Because to Mr. Ody's point, nobody wants trash, yard waste, whatever the case may be, sitting out for great lengths of time. So it's multifaceted, to answer your question. It's people, sometimes it can be trucks, in addition to sometimes the regional customer service office does, unfortunately dispatches those things at a later time, which is not, you know, obviously advantageous. Anything you want to add, Luigi, to that?
Yeah, good evening. Thank you. The issue with tickets and the knowledge that he talks about, the knowledge base, we have the parameters for the contract. So when they enter the ticket for the collection, it has to be within the dates or the date range or the number of days that is contractually required. And then there's no two contracts that are the same. That is what we've got to fix. For some reason, that rep put in the wrong close date. Because what happens is when the ticket goes past the close date and it hasn't been resolved, we get a code red, and that gets escalated to the district manager. So that counts against us internally for our metrics. So we take, and we can't modify those tickets. We can't change the ticket. We can't delete it. So that way, there's no hanky-panky locally, right? So that you can't play with that, so your metrics look good. So if, when the call is taken in and the clerk or the rep puts in the wrong information, it's going to fall out of the boundaries of the contract. We won't know. We won't know, because, oh, the due date is X. It's within standard, when in fact it isn't, because it doesn't match the contract language. And that's what he's talking about, making a correction to make sure that the knowledge information is accurate, so that when they take the call, they put the right close date, and it doesn't fall out of standard.
Okay, so you guys have identified there's an error in the system. You're then changing the process to address that. When will that new process be in place, where that's no longer happening for our West Melbourne residents?
From what I understand, that has been corrected. That's what I understand. It has been corrected. And we looked at a report recently of tickets that were pending, and the only open tickets that I have currently were, there was 30 open tickets, and the input dates were the 17th and the 18th.
Okay.
But I'm sorry, and I just wanted to add something. Ma'am, you mentioned that there's residents on Nextdoor that I would ask, please, I don't have Nextdoor, I don't go through it, but if you have a resident that says, hey, I called in three weeks ago, A, I can pull up the recording of that conversation to hear what was told to the resident to make sure they weren't given any misinformation, and two, we need to address that internally. Please let us know.
Okay. Ms. McGuire? Oh, I'm sorry. Were you finished? I'm sorry, Ms. Adams.
Not done. Almost.
Please continue. Please continue.
I know that with storm season, we have a different process in terms of post-storm pickup. Do we anticipate having any delays on your end with pickups, knowing that we could get a storm kind of anytime? And we already know that there are residents with things still waiting to get picked up.
So if, so let me make sure I understand the question. So let's say we're getting threatened by a storm. If we have any pending tickets, will we get those resolved? Oh, that's absolutely the intention. Let's get them all resolved. What we need to do, if it, whether it's routed or on-call service, what happens is people, we should have done our hurricane prep and trimming of our trees prior to storm season. None of us do, or very few of us do. So we'll get a flood of calls where all of a sudden, hey, I need it picked up. Okay, we've got a duty to get that done. We've got to pick it up. So that's our plan. I mean, we have no choice, number one. Number two, also on the routed, the same thing happens, where you normally probably get, you know, let's say 50% of the people that put out something on the collection day, all of a sudden, you've got 80% participation because they're prepping for the storm. So unfortunately, we won't know that until there's a threat and we start seeing it out on the street. That's why we ask, hey, prior to storm season, get all your hurricane trimming done to avoid that situation.
So just so I understand, if a clam truck is called out for Resident A, the clam truck comes out, picks that up, but two doors down, Resident B has made a clam truck pile, either has made the call after his neighbor or hasn't made the call, does the truck have the autonomy to say, hey, there's a pile for pickup two doors down? I'm just going to pick that up while I'm here? Do they have that autonomy?
No, ma'am, not under the current system.
Okay.
Just because it would potentially delay everybody who did call who's on schedule for that day.
I do, and I understand that. So we don't want to delay the people who are following the process. But to me, it also feels a little bit like common sense of why would we then send the truck out a second time to the same neighborhood to do a second pickup? That's just my two cents on that.
I think that's the biggest complaint.
I know that the city has been working on sending out communication, encouraging people, hey, don't wait until the last minute to trim your trees during hurricane season. But in terms of general resident information, I know this was something that we've asked Dina before when she was in your position, so we will ask you the same question, considering we are still having challenges, both with resident education, but also resident communication. What is Waste Management doing on your end? Because you heard the things from the city manager that we are trying as a city. How can you guys help us to do our education and communication to our residents better?
In speaking with Mr. Ody, he showed me a, for lack of a better word, it's like a four-page flyer newsletter that goes out, and that goes to every single person in the city, every single home in the city, correct? So...
That's if they have a water bill, correct?
Right.
A printed water bill.
If they have a printed, if they have a printed or an electronic, if it's an electronic water bill, that the link is on the electronic water bill.
Okay.
So we've had discussions, well, the cities mail out information. We mailed out information at the start of this agreement. Do we continue to mail out? How do we get the person in that house to read the information that's sent to them and then follow the instructions? Ma'am, I've been doing this 35 years. I don't have the answer for that. Because people will receive the flyer, they just don't read it. We can send email blast that has other issues. They may no longer live in the city, or we may not have everybody's email. Same thing, even, we've even thought, okay, let's just do a video. Let's get a video out there. Maybe some people, it's a lot easier if they see the video as opposed to have to read instructions. But I don't have the silver bullet for that. I don't know what we can do to, once it's sent to the resident, how we can get them to follow the instructions.
So we have no current plans on Waste Management's end to work on that?
Ma'am, what all I have for you is, well, we could send a flyer, but I think we're in the same boat. We're in the exact same boat. How do we get those individuals to do that and to follow the instructions? So year-to-date, we've got 1,700 requests for clam pile pickups from January through, I think, yesterday. That's not a lot, and yet the deputy mayor is out there, and he's finding all these piles that haven't been called in. That's the biggest challenge. And I wish that I had the magic bullet for that.
And when residents are calling for your support center, I know I've had residents call me and ask, hey, I've called and no one's picking up. There's no one to reach. I don't know which number they're calling, because at that point, I tend to just try to solve their problem, and I'll get their address and their name, and I'll pass it along to, you know, our city staff, who then compile that list and send it to you guys to keep it organized. That way, not everyone's calling at the same time. Is there a regional office they're calling? Is there an office in West Melbourne they should be calling? Are there lines crossed in terms of residents are calling the wrong number? I'm just trying to understand.
There's our regional call center. That's where the calls would go if they're calling in. The fact that nobody's answering, I couldn't give you, I mean, unless the entire system is down, because we have redundancies, if the regional call center goes down, all the calls get routed to another location. So I couldn't tell you where they say nobody's answering. I don't know.
And because council's asking, what is that number?
Oh, ma'am, I cover half the state. I don't know the local number. I don't know if you've got it memorized.
I don't have it memorized either.
He'll get it to you later, Helen. Thank you, sir, Mayor. I'm good. Thank you.
All right, Ms. McGuire.
Two questions for me. Is there ever a time where Waste Management puts in the tickets if they're out and see something? Or is it just completely solely on the residents to put those in?
It's up to the resident, ma'am. And it's just honestly, having driven a truck, I want the driver to be focused on the safety of what he's doing.
Okay. And then second question, oh, gosh, I should have wrote it down now. Nope, it is not coming to me.
We can come back. That's all right. Mr. Bentley?
I do, I do have that phone number, as it's on the header of our website at westmelbourne.gov. It's 321-723-4455. That number again, 321-723-4455.
Thank you, Mr. Ody. You finished? Oh, you have it.
I remembered my question. Is there any restrictions on who can put in the ticket online? Because I've had residents say, hey, can I put this in for my neighbor? Is it going to flag it or restrict it? Or can literally somebody just be like, I'm sick of this, and put it in for, okay?
There's no restriction. As long as they input the address, there's no restriction.
Okay.
Is that finished? All right, thank you. Did you want to speak again, Mr. Bentley? No? I thought I saw your light on.
It was momentarily. I think we've already pretty much summarized the system. I would point out that the meeting that we had with these folks yesterday with Mr. Ody and myself, we have asked them to go off and look at a possibility. And if it comes back in a positive fashion, it's something that'll probably come back before the council to perhaps make a decision. So we'll wait for the output of the data that you're getting us. And it's not a perfect system, but it's, we're trying to make it better than it is today, because it's tough on folks right now. Trying to get 10,000 people to know to call in is difficult. There's 10,000 homes or 11,000 homes in West Melbourne. And so if we only have 10% of them that don't follow the process, that's a lot of homes and a lot of stuff that's out there. So thanks, guys. I appreciate you guys working with Mr. Ody and myself, and it's to be continued. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bentley. So I keep those flyers and those door hangers in my car, and I drive around the city all the time. And when I see them, if it looks like it might be an hour when a person is home, I will go knock on their door, and if not, I will leave it. Some of these things have been there a very, very, very long time, and we've had this conversation before. Now, we, three years ago, when we got the new Bertha Brown lid, big Bertha Brown lid, three years ago, we're three years into this now, and we still don't have everybody using those. Some people are new, they don't, they move in, they don't even know what they're for. They weren't here when they first happened. That's not an excuse. It's just a matter of education, as we've already talked about. But now, I did have a chance to do a ride-along a couple of years ago, and it was great fun, and I loved it. So I know that you've got cameras in there, and the cameras see everything. So if someone calls in and says their mailbox, one of your trucks has their mailbox, they can go back and look on the camera and see that it was broken before the truck got there or after. Maybe they did. But I know that those cameras see everything. So now that we have AI, we have Grok, and we have ChatGPT, we have AI, is there not a program, some smart coder can't write, that will see the piles, because the cameras see everything, and have the address of that property and automatically turn it into Waste Management without the driver having to be distracted or do anything, and without a person having to call it in?
I don't know. I'm not aware of any AI that would do that with our cameras on the truck. I'm not aware of that. But the routed system would be the step that eliminates all of that without having to rely on the computer. Just, you know, if we know that on Monday, we've got to be on the street, and everything that's out on Monday...
I'm speaking to the mic.
Everything on Monday has to be picked up, then nobody has to call in.
So, but, all right, so when we did this three years ago, we reorganized the whole city. So now there is a Waste Management trucks in our city every day of the week. So every day of the week, the trucks are going by, and every day of the week, in some area of the city, those trucks are seeing the waste piles on the road, whether they're called in or not. So you, it seems like waste management would have eyes on first, everywhere, and would have an opportunity to report that. And I know you said you don't want your drivers distracted, they have to, you know, they have a job to do, they're driving a multi-ton vehicle. Do you think that might be some kind of benefit? Maybe, is there something I know you can do with those cameras? I know you can do better with that.
Can absolutely run it up to the IT people that do the programming and see if that's a feasible, something that's feasible. I mean, the trucks have GPS, so technically you'd know more or less, you know, the, the geocode of that location of the, of the picture. So I don't know, I'm not aware of it, but it can't hurt to ask.
All right, so thank you. So the reason, the reason we don't pick up the pile that's right next to the one that was called in, even though they didn't call in, and it's equally as old, or even it was just put out there yesterday, the reason we don't pick up that other pile is because we don't want the truck to get full before you pick up the others that did call in, is that why? Is that?
We don't want to push back the people that did follow the instructions and, and call in and request a pickup.
So it doesn't, so if there are only, well, are all of your calls every day, does it fill up the entire day, so there are no open spots in the day?
Yes, ma'am, we try to, we try to route them to be completely full for the day, that way you get the maximum efficiency out of the vehicle.
Okay, I'm just, because that's the biggest complaint that I hear all the time, as like, I'm right there, I'm standing there watching the guy, and I think he's going to come to my house next, and he drives off. That makes people so angry when they see that happen, that's probably my number one complaint that I get all the time, they were right here and didn't pick it up.
Ma'am, understood.
So that's it, that's my comment. Any else want to make a comment? Mr. Rhodey, do you want to finish that up?
No, I, I think, you know, we, it's, it's worth exploring what, what we dubbed on the fly as more of a, a hybrid option, so keeping, keeping the brown lids, but then looking at some kind of routed service for yard, for the clam pickup, so that we don't, you know, maybe, that would avoid people having to go to the website or call in the pile, and so kind of a hybrid system from what we had before.
Well, I'm, I'll for that. Do we have an idea what that would cost? I'm sure there's an additional fee.
I, I have full confidence that, that Luigi is working on that.
Yes, sir.
I think it was twenty-five cents a month.
I, I remember him saying something about twenty-five cents a month.
I just need to know where to fill out an application.
Thank you very much for coming here and listening to us tonight, we appreciate it very much. I know it's not an easy job that you have, thank you. Thank you. Okay, next item, annexation, Ms. Fisher.
Okay, for the record, my name is Kristi Fisher, I'm the city planning director, and this is an agenda item that you all heard at the last meeting. For the audience's benefit, you know, working as the city planning director, we look at the comprehensive plan, we look at the land development regulations, we provide recommendations, or we let the planning and zoning board provide recommendations. Annexations are not one that goes to the planning and zoning board, they come directly to city council, and as I've said to you all many times, it doesn't matter if it's a small, tiny, little piece of property, or a large piece of property, everything kind of goes through the same process. So with this particular agenda item, what we, you know, first remind everybody is the property history, its location, it's a triangular property that's west of Falcon Ridge, the area in the color shading shows the city limits, and the red triangle is a proposed annexation. So this is on the east side of I-95. The parcel is approximately point-six-seven acres in size, it had a static billboard on it in two thousand and five, the Falcon Ridge developer didn't purchase this property, and the original owner retained it. This parcel was contemplated to have signage for Falcon Ridge, but that didn't occur. The property is vacant, possible use of the property, it, it will become city property, so that was from the past public hearing we had on this, and annexation notices were sent to surrounding property owners, we did not as staff receive phone calls, emails, or visits from adjacent property owners. One of the requirements as part of annexation is adjacency, this property is adjacent to the city limit. And, you know, usually when we annex, it's for providing urban services such as utilities, and this particular property is not going to have utilities, because it's part of that coastal crossing development, the larger development. What the applicant who is in the audience has requested is the MD, the medium-density residential, future land use designation, and for the zoning to be R2, which is one-two and multifamily zoning. Sorry. Okay. So in conclusion, you all, I believe it was two weeks ago, heard the first reading of the ordinance, and again, by law, we have to do this, the second reading, and since you approved the first reading of ordinance twenty-two-five-eighteen, we're asking you to consider approving the second reading of ordinance twenty-two-five-eighteen. This photo shows a drainage bank to the left, and that's the Melbourne Tillman Canal, as the access to the triangle property, there is no road, you know, that exists to it. I'll be happy to answer any technical questions, but like I said, the applicant is here, and if the city attorney could read the title. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, thank you, this is ordinance number twenty-two-five-dash-eighteen, in order to the city of West Melbourne, Brevard County, Florida, annexing by a voluntary petition a parcel of land approximately point-six-seven plus or minus acres in size, located approximately twenty-four-hundred-and-fifty-seven feet south of the intersection of New Haven Avenue and Coastal Lane, immediately west of Falcon Ridge subdivision, east of I-95 and south of the FDOT I-95 retention pond, and as more fully described herein, finding that the area being annexed is reasonably compact and contiguous to the city, that the annexation of the property does not create an enclave, and that the annexation of the property otherwise complies with Florida law, amending the corporate boundaries of the city to provide the incorporation of the real property described herein, providing for filing of the revised city boundaries with the Department of State, providing for repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Thank you.
Thank you, this is quasi judicial, did you want to do that?
The annexation portion isn't, when we get to the next portion, that will be.
All right, thank you. All right, this is a public hearing, do we have any cards, speaker cards on this? All right, we will close the public hearing on this. Any question, oh, Ms. Adams.
Thank you, Mayor. I think we've talked at length at our previous meeting about this particular property, and I know the, you know, the different people involved in the project had also shared their opinions. Ms. Fisher, I didn't have any additional questions on it, I will share for the good of counsel, because it came up as a side comment during our workshop of why do I try to save so many trees? So I would like to reiterate that I would like to keep this property as, as trees and a hopeful conservation space. I already see Mr. Rhodey chugging at me. It's okay.
It's only point-six-seven acres.
I know, but I gotta, I gotta get the acreage where I can with the trees, so I'm going to start with point-six-seven and go from there, sir. With that in mind, I'd like to make a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance twenty-two-five-eighteen, annexing the property.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bentley.
Second.
All right, thank you, we have a motion on the floor from Ms. Adams, and we have a second from Mr. Bentley, all those in favor of annexing this property, please signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, say nay. Motion carries seven-zero. All right, thank you. All right, five B, Ms. Fisher.
So as we've done in the past, since five B and five C both have to do with the same property, and it has to do with the land use and the zoning, we're going to do the presentation together, and that, this is just one slideshow, so you're not going to hear individual slideshows on each agenda item on these, but that you do make individual motions on the ordinances that go with this. So this particular item has not been before you all, the first part was annexation, this next part is a future land use designation and the zoning. It has gone to the planning and zoning board, and the planning and zoning board did recommend that council approve it, so again, they're an advisory body, and they've recommended approval. And at this point, I turn this part of it over to the attorney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, this is the quasi judicial disclosure portion, as you had already alluded to, the quasi judicial hearings do require you to provide notice to the public and to the applicant, if you've had any communications outside of the materials that you've been provided as part of the packet, or conversations with staff, any other just discussions with anybody, emails you've received, any other communications, et cetera, including if you were to drive by the site, which in this case, I think would be pretty impressive, considering how remote it is, but if you did, that should be disclosed as well, and I would ask you to please do so now.
Any disclosures? All right, thank you.
Okay, so continuing, it's the same property, here we list the applicant owner as Courtney Barker, she is in the audience, like I said, if you had any questions. We talked about the size of the property, currently the property is vacant, you know, the proposed use is potentially a public use and tree preservation, and that was specified in the development agreement. Existing flu stands for future land use designation, so being in the county, it has this residential four designation, now that we've annexed it in, we have to give it a city designation, and that would be this MD res, medium-density residential. And similarly, with the zoning, it has a county agriculture residential, because that's what it was in the county. What we have in the city is this one-two and multiple-family dwelling unit. So again, the development agreement was already heard at the last council meeting, and there was a paragraph, I'm not going to read through it, that talked about, you know, this being dedicated to the city for public benefit, but it could be, you know, also that it is left the way it is. The last sentence tells you that, you know, the city will allow the developer to count the trees towards their tree requirements that they have on the main part of their property. So as a reminder, the main part of the coastal crossing development is south of coastal commerce, and it's kind of these orange-y parcels, you can see how remote the triangle is, and this is, you know, the map tells you that it's going from what its designation is in the county to a similar color as the, the parent sort of parcel in this case. And then we do the table that shows the compatibility, you know, and it does show that it's near other residential, it's also near one of the canals. The comprehensive plan review, this is where we compare, you know, what we have as future land use goals, objectives, and policies, those are the adopted items that we have in the comprehensive plan, so not all the comprehensive plan is adopted, the future land use goals, the objectives and policies, and some of the other elements are, is something that the state of Florida also has us look at. We also, as part of the state of Florida, review, have to analyze the maximum infrastructure and service impacts, and if, you know, for some reason this were to develop, it would be connected to city water and sewer, like I said, it's pretty remote, we've already established in the development agreement that it's not going to be developed, but we still have to go through this review. In terms of the impacts, you know, if this for some reason had developed in the county, it might have three DU, stands for dwelling units, in the city, it could potentially have seven dwelling units, that's not much of an increase. And of course, the fire protection continues to be for our county, but then law enforcement changes to be city of West Melbourne. This is one of the future land use policies that we look at, and so this is the intent statement of it, we do believe it's a good transition between the single-family neighborhoods and the more intense commercial subdivision to the north. We also look at the delivery of public facilities, like I said, it's unlikely, but we do have a capacity, that's sort of the bottom line. Property rights analysis is something that I think a lot of citizens are not aware of, that every single local government, all four hundred and whatever of them, all sixty-seven counties are required by the state to have a whole property rights element in its comprehensive plan, that says if a person has, a person, an entity, whoever it is, has property, and it has a certain designation, they can build on it. So that, that's sort of baked in, that had nothing to do with the city, that has to do with the state, you know, giving us that mandate. So five B, the rezoning request, I know a lot more people understand zoning than they do future land use, but again, this is where, you know, in the county, it probably made sense once upon a time for this agriculture residential, it makes more sense to, once it's in the city, which it just, you know, got into the city tonight, to have the R2 zoning. The rezoning analysis for compatibility is very similar, and, you know, it is consistent with our land development regulations. Some of the items that we look at is that, you know, the application doesn't contain conditions or limitations that are not applicable to other properties, so that goes back to that notion of if it's point-six-seven acres, if it's a hundred acres, we have to do the same analysis. So in conclusion, at the planning and zoning board on August thirteenth, the planning and zoning board did give these two recommendations for agenda item five B, that council consider approving the first reading of ordinance twenty-two-five-dash-twenty-one, and then for agenda item five C, they recommended that council consider approving the first reading of ordinance twenty-two-five-dash-twenty-two, and if the city attorney could read the title paragraphs, please.
And Madam Mayor, as the planner noted, we do have to do the motion separately and the vote separately, but I will read the ordinances in turn together. Ordinance number twenty-two-five-dash-twenty-one, in order to the city of West Melbourne, Brevard County, Florida, amending the future land use map of the comprehensive plan to change the future land use on parcels of land totaling point-six-seven plus or minus acres located approximately twenty-five forty-seven feet south of the intersection of US-192, West New Haven Avenue, and Coastal Lane, as more fully described herein, from Brevard County Residential Four to City of West Melbourne Medium Density Residential, providing an effective date. And ordinance number twenty-two-five-dash-twenty-two, in order to the city of West Melbourne, Brevard County, Florida, rezoning a point-six-seven plus or minus acre parcel of land, generally located approximately twenty-five forty-seven feet south of the intersection of US-192, West New Haven Avenue, and Coastal Lane, and as more fully described herein, from city of, or city of Brevard, County of Brevard County Agricultural Residential, to City of West Melbourne R2, one-two and multiple-family dwelling district, providing an effective date. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, do we have any speaker cards on either of these? All right, we'll close the public hearing, we're going to do twenty-two-five separately from twenty-two, correct? Mr. Carey, you want them separately?
Twenty-two-one and then twenty-two-two, please.
Twenty-two, all right, is, any suggestions of the council? Are any questions, Mr. Gaylord?
I'll make a motion, we approve item five B, so approve the first reading of ordinance twenty-two-five, second reading?
Yes.
Second reading.
Twenty, twenty-two-five, twenty-one?
Yeah, twenty-one.
All right, thank you. Ms. McGuire?
Second.
All right, thank you. Ms. Volz, you have a question?
No, I was just going to second, no.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor from Mr. Gaylord, a second from Ms. McGuire, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, say nay. Motion carries seven-zero. All right, Mr. Frampus.
Thank you, Mayor, I make a motion, we approve the first reading of ordinance number twenty-two-five-dash-twenty-two, as written.
Thank you, Mr. Gaylord?
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the floor for Mr. Frampus, and a second by Mr. Gaylord, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, say nay. Motion carries seven-zero. All right, thank you. Thank you very much, just go over here to item C, D. Public hearing, annual stormwater utility budget and assessment, Candace, thank you. Hello, Ms. Candace. Happy belated birthday.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So every year, we have to adopt the annual stormwater budget and assessment rule that is provided by the county. I do want to make a couple notes for this year, one is that the information provided in the agenda packet has been updated since then, the county received additional properties added to our assessment rule on Monday, so there were three apartment, three of the apartment complexes that went from under, under, oh my goodness, in development, excuse me, to completed, so it, it benefits us, I mean, it raises our role, raises our revenue that we're going to bring in, but of course, that then adjusts everything that we put in the packet, so it changes our stormwater budget, and then some of those changes as well. So just to kind of give you that heads up, you should have copies of the updated resolutions with that rule showing up in there. So our budget went from seven-hundred-and-sixty-four-thousand to seven-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand. You'll notice the budget didn't increase as much as the role increased, but that is because we were initially using some appropriated fund balance to supplement for the projects that we have, and now we don't have to use that ten thousand dollars there, and can keep that in our stormwater fund balance. So that's why those numbers don't line up, if you did the math, which of course I did, so. The other thing I want to point out about the change that we have here is that when we adopted our rate increase in July of twenty-two-four, we included an annual CPI increase that we could have on there. We discussed this in the May six revenue budget workshop that we had, and so that was a two-point-nine percent increase, so that is in here as well at the fifty-six-twenty-one, and that's the, just kind of like our normal rate, and then depending on if they have stormwater credits and other things, each residence can kind of be a little bit different. So, all of that, if you have any other questions, I am happy to answer that, but we are just looking for the adoption for the resolution with the annual stormwater and assessment rule. rule, and then we do also have representatives from the county here if there are other questions.
All right, thank you. Mr. Bentley.
First, I'll make a motion that we approve this 2025-14, but I do have a question.
Oh, it is a public hearing, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Yes.
Yeah, it is a public hearing.
Let me ask my question, then, if I can. I won't make a motion. Did the county used to build us, and are we now going to build us, or is this states with the county?
This stays with the county.
Okay. I thought I had seen something that we were going to be part of the billing now.
So we, we have looked at some of the other items that the county does for us that kind of include, like some of the stormwater education and things like that that we're looking at taking in-house, but as far as the actual billing for the stormwater and everything, it goes through the county and it's one of the below the line, not ad verbor.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bentley. All right, this is a public hearing. Do we have any speaker cards? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Mr. Bentley, your light is still on, did you want to?
If you close the public hearing, I'll make a motion.
I did close it.
Then I make a motion that we approve 2025-14.
All right, thank you. Mr. Frampton.
I'll second.
All right, thank you. We have a motion on the floor from Mr. Bentley, and we have a second, I'm sorry, Ms. Adams, did you have a question?
Sorry, I thought my mic was on. I just had a quick question. In our packet, I know that you had said it had updated since then. The packet date said as of August 11th, the new date is as of, what, yesterday?
Yes, as of August 18.
So are we expecting any other differences, or now that we're having our meeting and this is being presented, the county says this is it, we are locked in, everything has been accounted for?
This should be it, everything should be locked in. Historically, we have not received updates this late in the year. Usually by that, that earlier August date is when we have all of our numbers. And so this was just kind of a weird thing, that when the county logged in on Monday morning, it had been updated, so.
Fair. I just wanted to make sure if it was a fluke, we're not expecting a fluke after the meeting. Hopefully not, but I don't make any promises. Understood, thank you.
All right, thank you. No other questions? All right, so we have a motion on the floor from Mr. Bentley, a second from Mr. Frampton. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, say nay. Motion carries 7-0. Thank you very much. All right, next item is consent. I'm sorry, public forum. We have one speaker card for public forum, thank you. Jean Colley? Colley? Joan? Thank you. Please state your name and address for the public record.
Joan Connelly, 551 Jennifer Circle in Hollywood Estates.
Thank you, you can pull that down, or you can even take it off of there if you like. Okay. All right.
So I just want to follow up on the last meeting. We have a lot of residents inquiring about the status of our front entrance, and if there's any other questions or concerns that myself or people in the community could answer concerning the decision with the maintenance of the front.
Sure. Unfortunately, we had set a staff meeting to discuss this item and take a look at the original agreements. There's two, two prior agreements with the City of West Melbourne and the Hollywood Estates Group, and we had had that meeting scheduled for Friday afternoon. About five minutes before that meeting, we got a call from the City of Melbourne that they had lost pressure in the system, and we basically spent the next two and a half hours trying to figure out what we were going to do to get pressure back into our system. Thankfully, they were able to get it back online. We didn't have a boil notice, but that took our entire Friday afternoon, so. We do have the, we do have the meeting scheduled for Thursday this week to take a look at that, and we, we promise we will get some answers back to this, to this body relative to the exciting issue of the Hollywood Estates entrance.
Okay, so there's nothing I can do for you to?
No, I think we're very familiar with the situation. We just have to look at the agreements and then what a future agreement, you know, part of the struggle is what, what future agreement, what entity would we be entering into that future agreement with, to try to solve this once and for all, so that we're not having this back and forth of cutting it, not cutting it, and try to resolve that issue once and for all, for everyone.
I speak with T and W today, and I know that he wasn't part of any of this process, and I know in the, what is it, the association, the bylaws, he is supposed to be part of any kind of major decision made for the community with a majority. So like I said, the HOA is so minimal, and it is volunteer. So, you know, anything you could do, we would greatly appreciate it. If you have an uproar.
We want to get this resolved as fast as you do. We just.
I do appreciate that.
We just have, we've had this back and forth of cutting it, not cutting it, for a couple times since I've been here, and I've only been here four years, so. We want to try to get this resolved.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Connelly. Any other cards before we close the public forum? All right, thank you, we'll close the public forum. Next item is consent. Mr. Frampton.
Make a motion, we accept the one item on the consent agenda.
Thank you very much, Ms. Adams.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion on the floor from Mr. Frampton, and a second from Ms. Adams. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, say nay. Motion carries 7-0. All right, thank you. All right, next item, final plat, Heritage Point, action agenda. All right, I do have some cards.
I'm going to do my presentation. Okay, well, you're standing up there. Okay. It is, I just wanted to make sure we're communicating.
Ms. Fisher, I was just waiting, I was waiting for you to get back to your seat. Thank you, Ms. Fisher.
Okay, this is agenda item 8A, the Heritage Point Commercial Final Plat, but it's really a replat, and so I'm going to explain a little bit about what that means. The background of this property is that the property owner is Mitten Road Development LLC. I believe Mr. Cole Oliver is representing them, or is one of those owners who certainly can address, you know, specific questions about the development to him. The size of the property is four and a half acres, so tract C1, this polygon in yellow is the area that we're talking about. We're not talking about any other property. It's located on the east side of Mitten Road, south of Heritage Oaks Boulevard. The applicant's request, final plat, or really a replat for the heritage commercial, to create three commercial lots, zone commercial parkway, and a private driveway, tract A. This, like all of the subdivision processes, is a two-part process up until July 1st, with a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Board, which it received June 11th, they were in favor of it, and then city council. This is a little unusual for plats, we don't normally have a nine-year history. Normally, subdivision plats are about three or four years, but at any rate, this started in 2016, and then in 2018, the reason why I keep saying this is a replat, is that in 2018, they got final plat approval. What did they get final plat approval for back then, as a Heritage Point subdivision? Forty-nine single-family lots and one commercial lot. And then if you forward to the year 2025, they got construction drawing approval. So for layman's terms, that means that they got the infrastructure approval to build the road, the water, the sewer, the stormwater, and get their permits from the county, from all the other agencies, and I'll list that in some of the other slides. But that, that's crucial, because that happens with every subdivision, not just commercial, it happens with residential, with any other type of subdivision. This is a process that subdivisions go through in the City of West Melbourne. And June 11th is when the replat, like I said, was reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Board. So again, it's not a new plat, it's not something brand new, off, hot off the press, it's just a replat, one portion of the plat that they have. Another way of looking at this is in 2016, is when the rezoning happened. So remember that this polygon that's shown with the red dashed lines was all zone commercial parkway, it was 14 acres, and then the east side was zoned R2. So what flew into the screen is this yellow polygon, and that's the area that became the 49 single-family lots next to Brookshire, and it's called Heritage Point. That means that there was one remaining four and a half acre parcel along Mitten Road with that zoning. What this image isn't showing, because it's 2016, before the development happened, it doesn't show the two stormwater ponds, so we'll show that on the next slide. But I wanted to also remind everybody that not only are we talking about the zoning district, and I know a lot of people understand zoning district, and overlay district is kind of like a foreign animal, but it is a technique that planners use, such as myself, to create like an additional set of regulations or permissions for property, and what this is part of is an area called the town center overlay, you know, where we said that this part of the city was more or less the city's town center, and we did have some prohibitions in terms of uses. So that fourth bullet, or the fifth bullet, tells you that gas stations, truck stops, mini warehouse, vehicle sale lots, pond shops are prohibited on that property. It's not meant to be a property that's going to hold a lot of commercial. That's another way of sort of translating, you know, what I just said, you know, like other areas.
While you have that picture up, can you use your pointer and show where the, the actual pond is that I'm looking at on the?
It will be easier to show it on the next one, but there's a pond here, and then there's also.
Okay, so the pond is in, in the property that we're talking about now, it's not in the other?
It's not in the replat.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not part of the replat, the ponds already exist. They were built in 2018. So this is what was approved in that Heritage Point Final Plat, and I thought maybe with colors it'd be a little bit easier to read, that the yellow area represents the single-family, and I know there's, you know, little lines that are hard to read, and there's a road that leads down the center of it, that already exists. So you, you drive into Bouton Way, I think is the name of the street, and you see the 49 lots. Those two ponds that I just was asked where they're located, they're in between the residential and what will be the commercial, and then there's another pond here that's actually closer to Mitten, and I believe that's the one with the fountain in it, Cole, is that the one that has a fountain in it? Okay. The other item to point out is that currently, I know it doesn't show up as purple very well on this slide, but there is a sidewalk dogleg, I call, that already exists out of this part of the subdivision, and that once the commercial develops, the rest of the dogleg will be constructed, so that students who live, you know, in the Heritage Point subdivision can go directly on the sidewalk to Mitten Road. So again, not quite half is already built, but a part of it is already built. So what is it that we're talking about with this replat? So I keep saying it's a replat, not a new plat. This entirety is, you know, one lot right now, and what they're asking for is to go to three lots. So they, you know, can tell you more about the sizes of the lots, meaning the applicant, developer can tell you about them. They're not all equal in size, but again, you know, the totality of that area is four and a half acres. What they would also have, this tract A is a private internal roadway, it's not going to be a city-owned roadway, it'll be private, and it does have a connection to Mitten Road and a connection to Heritage Oaks Boulevard. But this is in essence what you all are voting on tonight, is whether to approve this image. So that's what the plat means. The June 17 city council meeting is when the item was tabled, and it was tabled so that additional information could be provided about the driveway connections, and just to let you know that, you know, again, the construction drawings are approved by technical staff, by the county staff, by City of West Melbourne, some of the other agencies, but at that meeting, the applicant's representative couldn't answer some of these questions. Again, I'm not going to read through the five bullet statements, everything that's in the black font is what was asked by council, and everything in sort of the purple font, the italicized font, is what the answers were provided by the developer, except for this last one. This last one is staff letting you know that, you know, if the developer's answer is that the Heritage Oaks driveway that they would have, and the intersection, the signalized intersection of Heritage Oaks Boulevard and Mitten is about 410 feet apart, that means roughly, you know, cars measuring 20 feet in length, there could be potentially 20 cars stacked at that intersection. So again, that means it's not right up on the intersection. We have a graphic to show you that, but again, this graphic is not what is part of this final plat or replat, it's just to show you from the construction drawing that this black line that sort of snakes through is what's going to be their internal road. And what they show is, you know, the driveway in this location having, you know, a lane in and a lane out, and again, this is not right next to it. If you use their internal pond as sort of a reference, it's at the east side, and if you look at the outline of this polygon, it's got this, you know, funny little hook here, and that's where the driveway is going to be. And then the driveway leading out onto Mitten Road, and Mitten Road is a county road, it is not a City of West Melbourne road. We do not have control on whether a county issues a permit or not, but the county did issue a driveway permit, and that's part of what you see for construction. You know, when you drive by, you see a turn lane under construction heading south, and that's to allow some of the stacking to turn into this new commercial subdivision, and then you see a turn lane heading north, that's much shorter in distance, to turn into it. There is also, coming out of their new subdivision, you would see a turn lane to go south, to cross over the median in Mitten, and to go south. Again, this is the county who approved this, but the county, you know, rightfully so, required that their driveway, their commercial driveway, has to line up with a driveway that's across the street, because if you don't line up, you have more collisions. So that's the Rod Taylor driveway, that's part of the Palm Garden Lake subdivision that already exists. The second bullet is just to point out that, you know, from the traffic study, they identified that there could be approximately 5,500 square feet of office and 6,000 square feet of retail. That's not a lot of development, that's, that's not big buildings. This building alone is, I think, over 10,000 square feet, so that just gives you an indication that it's not a big footprint. And then, you know, the three lots having potentially up to 80 peak hour trips, peak hour means in the PM, in the afternoon to evening. Brevard County, as I said, already required the southbound and northbound turn lanes, and based on the low volume of the proposed trips, the West Melbourne approved a full access to Heritage Oaks with no changes to the Heritage Oaks Boulevard at this time. There is that six-foot-wide concrete sidewalk along the front edge of the development on Mitten Road, you all have seen that under construction, so that already exists. But again, that all has to do with construction plans that have already been approved, and not anything really to do with, does the one commercial lot become three commercial lots? This, I thought, would be useful for everyone to sort of get a rough idea of, you know, this 410 feet, you can barely see in the distance the median that, you know, divides the lanes coming in and out onto Mitten Road, and this image here is as though you're standing on Mitten, and you're driving north, and you can see how, you know, the county wants this Rod Taylor driveway to line up with a curb cut that will become this driveway onto Mitten. So again, that's just providing a little bit of perspective. These are some other images to assist people in sort of trying to visualize what's essentially a two-dimensional drawing. The view from Heritage Oaks Boulevard of the construction that's under development now, you can see this, and then if you were standing at the south property line, looking north, you see, you know, the dirt and some of the grass that they're probably going to add a little bit of fill, so they can have building pads. As with all developments that are submitted to the city, staff has to look at our construction drawing requirements, and so that's why that third bullet is outlined in blue, and to ensure that the final plat Mylar, which is a special type of paper, meets all the statutory requirements in our code requirements. So none of these three properties will get sold until this final plat is approved. Outside agencies, they've satisfied all the outside agency requirements. I'm not going to read through the list of the different outside agencies that also look at the construction drawings in the plat, but these are some of them. And then in conclusion, what Planning and Zoning Board recommended was to approve the replat for Heritage Commercial with the following conditions. Conditions one and two are the standard conditions we put on plats. Condition three was more of a sort of tailored condition that if more than an equivalent of 6,000 square feet of retail and 5,500 square feet of office is built, a revised traffic study will be conducted to assess Heritage Oaks Boulevard improvements. And like I said, I believe the applicant wants to make a presentation, so I'll keep up. Do you have any show that you're going to give, Cole? Okay, so I'll just keep up that one that shows the three lots.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Cole Oliver, Ross. Sorry, I always hate getting too close to these things, I never know if I'm yelling in. I never know if I'm yelling into them or not. But Cole Oliver with Ross Way Swad representing the applicant. I'd like to thank the city staff for their review and analysis here. We agree and concur with the report, the conditions that the city has recommended here. And to the, you know, the unfortunate timeline of how long it's taken, you know, we did run into, I think there was a slide that showed there's four different permitting agencies that we had to check the box with every single one before we could come in to know that this project could be built. And so that has been done. And, you know, contracts have been entered into both the construction of the project and with end users who are looking to purchase it. So the number that you see on the screen here, the 5,500 square feet of office and 6,000 square feet of retail, just to point out, the agenda specifies medical office, 5,500 square feet of medical office. We have a slight discrepancy on the slide in the agenda. But the agenda is the one that we were proposing based on the end user, who is a dental office, is the proposed contract. The other retail contract has fallen out due to the length of time that it's taken to get all the permitting in place. So we do not have a user for that anticipated spot at the moment. We hope to, you know, find someone that will come in and develop there. The reason why we're asking to split it into three different lots is that after several years of marketing the project through 2018 till, I mean, let's all ignore that 2020, 2021 timeframe because there wasn't a lot of marketing that anyone could do at that time due to COVID. But through till 2022, 2023 timeframe, we found no users that were looking for a four-and-a-half-piece commercial project. They just didn't want that size of land to build anything. Because when you're starting to look at that size of land, you're looking at a much larger building, which generates a lot more traffic, which is very, very hard to meet the concurrency requirements that are in place due to the existing traffic on Mitten and Heritage Oaks. And so that is why the subdivision of the land has been requested is to, because that's what the market was telling us needed to be there, smaller users that needed smaller lots. Parcels one and two are approximately half-acre parcels because the stormwater retention for the commercial parcel has already been accounted for under the regulations and the existing stormwater ponds that were built in the 2018 timeframe. You know, but I'm here to answer questions that that you all might have to the extent we can. I would, you know, for purposes of the record, make sure that the staff report is, you know, moved into the record. We agree with all the findings there. And, you know, with that, I'll answer the questions to the best of my ability.
Ms. Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a couple of questions. My first one is for staff, but you can stay up there because I've got questions for you as well. Christie, you went through in your report the list of things that cannot go there based on the restrictions for that property. So in your mind, from a city staff perspective, what types of things can go in that property?
From the staff perspective, I mean, we all know what medical offices are. And to Mr. Oliver's point that the conditions specifically said medical office, you're correct. I was asked to change that to be just office in the presentation. So if you're okay with that slight change, then that is the change that we made. But certainly, four and a half acres is appropriate for very small development. So keep in mind that I I've always sort of said that most commercial development needs at least about an acre to develop. So I don't anticipate if they just have three lots and they have a couple of, you know, doctor offices, or even if it's an insurance office or something else, 6,000 square feet of retail is a very small footprint. To give you perspective, most convenience stores are about 3,000 to 5,000 square foot of footprint. And you all can imagine, you know, what that looks like. So 6,000 square foot is going to be either very small retail, or they will split it into, you know, the the retail might be split into something that, you know, is essentially just a little store. And then perhaps the other side would end up being office. But I don't know if Mr. Oliver's talked to anybody. He's certainly aware of the Town Center Overlay and the restrictions that are in it. So that's what I see as staff. I don't see, you know, something that's going to be a big traffic generator because they're in the Town Center Overlay. And those big traffic generators are really more for the arterial roads of Palm Bay Road and US 192.
Understood. Thank you.
I'm going to tag on to that comment. I've heard no talk of anyone seeking any zoning changes from the overlay district here. So, you know, we understand the zoning and we're happy to work to comply with it.
Thank you. I know you had said you're looking at potential medical office for one of the two lots at the end. Christie, if you want to go to the one that shows the three pieces broken apart, either any of the, any of them will work. Are they going into both lots, one and two?
So currently, the lot one is the contract that fell out due to the passage of time. So the one tenant or the one end user is a dentist, and he is under contract on the second parcel. So, you know, unfortunately, that's the one he's under contract for, so.
Why is lot three not broken up, or then we have equal lot sizes for one, two, and three?
Good question, because we had users for lots one and two, that that was the size they needed. And to try to provide maximum flexibility for whoever was coming in in the future, we tried to leave that parcel at a size that could accommodate that need should it come in. And, you know, if someone comes in and says, hey, I need only one acre, you know, I'm going to say, good luck. Go talk to the city council and go through the replat process. But they would have to meet all of the requirements that have met here if they want to try to do that.
I was just wondering more so from an end user perspective, but right now you don't have an end user for three.
Today, we've had no users that have approached just for that, unfortunately.
Okay. The current curb cut that's in place on Heritage Oaks Boulevard on that right-hand side where the the larger trucks are coming in and out, are you familiar with that curb cut and where it's located?
She's talking about the construction driveway, which is not exactly where this this end driveway is going to be.
That's what I'm getting clarification on.
To be honest, Ms. Adams, I do not know specifically where that construction driveway is located versus where the proposed final driveway is.
Okay. Then it wouldn't help to ask you if that's then going to get moved back. Because currently, where it's located is more on that north sense of direction with the map, the way that it is currently. But it's closer, yeah, it's closer to where Ms. Fisher is then pointing to on the map. And so looking at that to where it is versus to where the intersection is, seemed very close to the island that's currently there on the Boulevard where I had concerns. But staff had thought that it was going to get moved back. And I just wanted clarification on that from your part.
I can just say it's going to be as drawn on the the drawing, so, you know.
Understood.
The existing construction entrance is closer than, you know, it's unfortunately, it's temporary, but it's there for now. And when the final construction is done, it'll be moved.
And I understand you're requesting that we just break it into the three parcels, which makes sense. But I was not here when, you know, this came before the body, so I have to ask my questions. And staff did the best that they could, but ultimately, some of them are developer-only. Looking at where the connection is for Heritage Oaks Boulevard, you have both a left and right turn access. But Heritage Oaks Boulevard is currently a dead-end road. Why is there a right turn access?
So that the residents that live back there can go take a right to go back in there should they be utilizing the services there, you know, without, if you take them out onto Heritage and send them, make them turn left, and they're going to go out to Mitten Road and try to do a U-turn at the light to get back to their houses.
Which would not be good either.
I would not expect it to be so, but.
But I've had residents ask me, and so I'm just compiling all of my questions. And I thought, well, that made sense to me, but in case there was a different reason, I wanted to ask. I know that in terms of this being a replat, you know, we're looking at the the three parcels. But I also believe in, you know, being a good and responsible neighbor. And we have a lot of residents who live back off of Heritage Oaks Boulevard, of which I drive on a regular basis, that are concerned about when we look at things from a safety perspective, especially considering we've got the elementary schools both north and south of the development where we have kids walking on a daily basis. That current small triangle, I know it's hard to see in that diagram, but the small triangle right behind the island is where the current crossing guard parks the car so that they can get the kids across the street safely. And so I think about those children, I think about our residents that live back there. Knowing that, you know, I appreciate that these are hopefully going to be lower trip generators for the property than what could be. So I do appreciate that. Are you willing to address the safety and somewhat of a transportation concern by potentially investing, even potentially splitting the cost with the city of looking at an intersection improvement of Heritage Oaks Boulevard and Mitten?
You know, I think that, as the staff said, that we'd be willing to look at the intersection improvement should the traffic report that the engineers put together show that it's necessary. You know, we don't mind the parking guard, or I can work with the owner to get the parking, you know, attendant allowed to park on the property there. So at least he's not out parked in the middle of the driveway. But, you know, at this point, you know, we have the approved construction plans and, you know, we're not looking to change them from that. It sends us down another hole. But we would consider it in the future as the next, you know, if another traffic report is necessary.
So no, not at this time with the development coming forward? Okay. Making sure I checked off all of my questions. Are you concerned from a driver or pedestrian perspective? I know the county already approved it, and it doesn't come forward to this body. But looking at that south exit of your property, and I know that the direct, you know, Taylor Drive coming right across the way has the same access, but I can't ask them my question because that had already been developed. For the for the residents, the drivers, the pedestrians who are using that Mitten corridor with the dedicated south turn lane, knowing that how close it is to the light, I don't know if you've tried from from the other side of the road, crossing onto Mitten the opposite way, and then trying to make a U-turn at that intersection. It's not a very long length for cars that will then be trying to either make a left or trying to go to the light to then make the U-turn, which I know they they had cut it out in hoping to avoid the U-turn incidents. But I just think of, you know, I don't know how often you drive Mitten Road, but especially during peak times, that traffic does not move much at all. And so I'm picturing, you know, our residents, but also our pedestrians who utilize the sidewalk, trying to make a left turn south onto Mitten Road, I feel is going to lead to a lot of accidents and safety concerns. Is there anything we can do there?
You know, from my perspective, if you're asking if I'm personally concerned, you know, as a father of a 16-year-old who got her license a couple of weeks ago, I'm concerned about everything all the time at this moment, so.
Great, what can we do about it?
Traffic everywhere, you know, because of safety reasons. But, you know, I rely on the experts and the permitting officials to set those guidelines as to what are safety based off of the engineering rules and concerns that are, you know, set out by the different manuals. Safety and and personal concerns is subjective term, so all we can rely on is the objective, you know, studies and permitting documents that are put out there. So that would be the way I would answer that question.
I understand, but I also know we don't get what we don't ask for. And I had to try, just in hopes that, you know, that could be something that we can work out. If not at this time, maybe it's something that we could look at in the future should the development warrant it. Just because I, again, I don't know how often you drive this particular intersection, but even looking at the the Milwaukee Heritage Oaks and and Mitten intersection, the number of close calls and accidents that we do have is is not encouraging to know that there's then development. And I know it's lower than it could be. It's just something that sits on my brain.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Adams. Mr. Frampton, you have a question?
It's more of a statement, Mayor. Thank you. Just, I was the one that asked to take the medical out of the medical office. I just wanted the trigger to be a lesser requirement. So the trigger for the revised traffic study would be all office space and not just specific to medical office space. So if they put some other kind of office space in there besides medical, it wouldn't necessarily trigger it with it being medical office. So that's why I asked to have medical removed from there. So that that's why that word was struck, so.
Thank you. Thank you. So the idea of the sidewalk there that we had asked for so many years ago when this when this first came to council, the whole idea for that sidewalk was for safety to try to get kids off of having to walk on Mitten Road. That was the whole idea. So that area, that sidewalk, doesn't belong to just the people that live in that in that subdivision. That's open to everyone. So anyone who wants to avoid walking on Mitten Road can walk through there and use that sidewalk if they wish, correct?
You know, one point on the sidewalk that was part of the development was that we had a city agreement, a development agreement with the city regarding a six-foot asphalt sidewalk. It ran into a whole lot of issues with the county and that it's county right-of-way county sidewalk, and the county doesn't allow asphalt sidewalks. So we had to work through the fact that it's going to be a concrete sidewalk with, you know, staff's help, we were able to to get through that. But that was another one of the delay issues that I forgot to bring up at the time.
But I believe the question, Cole, was about the purple dogleg.
Yeah. My understanding is that's under under construction now.
And that's going to be dedicated to the public. It's not going to be a private sidewalk.
Correct.
I think that's the question.
So anyone can avoid being walking, walking on Mitten. Anyone can avoid that and stay off of that because it's not very much fun walking on Mitten as well. And thank you, Ms. Adams. I was concerned about that left turn out of there as well. And I was hoping that there might be a traffic light maybe in the future there, even if it's a blinking light during heavy hours. However, if these are, if there's a medical or an office, office space, a dentist office, which you've said you have one for a dentist, that's relatively low, low traffic anyway. The other office is, the larger suite three, that is too small for anything like a Target or a PetSmart or anything like that?
Well, those are typically 15 acre plus for those sized developments.
So it's, you're not going to have that kind of traffic as if you'd have that size of a store. It's always going to be smaller. You could have a hair salon or a bank or something in that situation, which again would be a low traffic. So the people that would be going in and out of there would not be, you would not have heavy traffic as if it was a retail, like what, like the mini Walmart that wanted to go there. That would have been much heavier traffic. So thank you. Mr. Rhodey, I know we talked about maybe some where the where the road comes out there, even though it would be low traffic going out onto Heritage, we talked about maybe doing some road improvements to be as least intrusive on Heritage Oaks Boulevard as possible.
Yeah, again, you know, separate from this discussion this evening, I think taking a look at the Heritage Oaks-Mitten intersection, I know Councilmember Adams brought it up, and you've brought it up, and several others have brought it up, evaluating that intersection to see if there's any kind of improvements that the city could do to to take a look at that traffic flow.
Right. Once we decide exactly where that drive is going to be, since Mr. Oliver wasn't quite sure where it's going to be.
The, I will say, he did say that. But I will say, what our staff did is we took the construction drawings that they submitted to the city and overlaid them on this graphic. So that is the, that is, that is not a set of construction drawings, but we took the construction drawings and laid them out on the site. And so all indications from the construction drawings are that the driveway access to Heritage Oaks is as far from the intersection as he could put it.
Apologies on my end if I didn't come across as that. It will be built as shown on the approved plans by the city.
Which is further back than where the current?
Which is, which is definitely further back than where the the construction pad is located now. And it would be, in a perfect world, it would have been nice for them to put that in the in the future spot of the access. But we we don't, we know how working with contractors go. We don't control. I I don't think the developer was there when the guys brought the trucks and said, you know, put it here, don't put it there. I think that's just where they put the access, and that's where they went.
All right. Thank you. Do you have any other comments, Mr. Oliver?
Only here to respond to questions if you have any.
Any other question, Mr. Ms. Adams?
Sorry, I missed one. I thought I had gotten them all. How close, and again, you may not know if if looking at where staff had done the overlay, but where the current driveway entrance is off of the Boulevard, how close is that to the the closest house in Heritage Point?
I don't know. Don't know the answer to that question. So, I mean, it it looks close.
So that's why I'm asking. I'm just wondering if.
If I could add, I mean, this isn't really a true reference point, but remember, in the city, most of the rear setbacks are 25 feet. If you'll notice, the rooftop of this house, there looks like there's a pool behind it. That's approximately 25 feet. If you kind of double that eyesight difference, that might be a separation of 50 feet to the back of somebody's house. That's what it looks like, but it, we haven't measured it out.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Sorry.
Thank you. I'm looking for other light time. What's the wishes of the council? Mr. Frampton?
I'll make a motion. We approve the replat for Heritage Point Commercial with the current conditions and with removing the word medical in the office as.
All right. Thank you. I need another light. Ms. McGuire?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor for Mr. Frampton and a second from Ms. McGuire. All those in favor signify by saying aye. McGuire, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed say nay. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much, Mr. Oliver, thank you. All right, next item.
Mr. Mayor, I.
Yes, Ms. Holtz?
I have to leave, I am just in a lot of pain with my thumb.
Thank you very much, I hope you feel better.
Thank you.
Councilwoman, do you need any help getting home?
No, I'm okay.
She said no.
Are you okay? Do you want me to walk that out with you?
Thumb operated.
Frampton, all those in favor of excusing Ms. Holtz signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed? Ms. Holtz, you are excused. Thank you. All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Petroni, you have your spot there, this is awarding the contract for the Ray Bullard WRFBNR improvement project.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, Mark Petroni, your capital projects manager. As you said, we're here to discuss awarding the contract for the BNR project at the Ray Bullard Water Reclamation Facility. Back in November 2016, the county passed a one-half cent or half a cent sales tax for the full purpose of improving the Indian River Lagoon. After that was implemented, we applied to save the Indian River Lagoon or Soral for grant money, and we received $4.26 million, which is to go to BNR, the BNR process at the plant and for some upgrades. After that, we applied to St. John's River Management and received $1.5 million, which followed by us applying to the DEP, Florida Department of Environmental Protection, where we received $1.34. After all that was done, working with the engineers, we received our final design, all the bid docs, and I was able to place the project out to bid on July 15, 2024 last year. We received three qualified bids from contractors on September 9. Unfortunately, all three bids came in way over budget, and we also learned that we weren't the only ones, there was a lot of the municipalities were also getting bids that were way over budget for their projects as well. So unfortunately, with the lowest bid being approximately $8 million over our budget, I came to council with a recommendation to reject the bids, for which was unanimously approved. So between the time we received the bids and the rejection, we've been all, we were all scratching our heads and figuring out what happened. We went to work and came up with basically a three-prong or three-phase approach to try and get this worthy project back on and put out the bid. One was looking at the plans and specs, which are the first two, and the third part was basically going and talking to the granting agencies. So our goal was to try and reduce the costs and maybe possibly increase funding from the agencies. So the first approach was looking at the plans and figure out what can we do with value engineering to try and bring some of the costs down, and we learned that on top of the BNR, there was also some upgrades that we learned that maybe would have been really nice, but some weren't needed, and the other ones we found out ended up being a platinum Cadillac, and we were able to find out that we can put them into maybe a limited Chevy and still get the same results of the project. We also wanted to make sure we kept all the elements that the, you know, granting agencies required, so we were trying to stay within those realms as well. The second part was the, you know, the specs, we also learned from looking at the specs that the, I guess the engineer was comfortable with certain specification manufacturers, and we learned there was only, in most instances, only maybe one manufacturer that was actually spec'd out, one supplier, one distributor, so when we changed the, through the value engineering, we changed some of the plans and specs, it opened up a lot of competition, so we were able to offer and go out and put more manufacturers out there, so we increased the competition. The third part that I mentioned was going back to the granting agencies, I'm going to probably hold off until I get to the fiscal aspect of it, because there's a couple of things I want to go over there, but we did reach out, notify the agencies of what was going on. After all that was done, we felt that we received, you know, we got and kind of accomplished the goal, so I was able to get revised plans, revised specs and bid docs. I put the project back out to bid last month, or actually, I'm sorry, July 1, and the bids were due last week, August 12, and we received five bids from qualified contractors, which is really good, and the lowest bid came in from Salt Cross Inc. So into the fiscal impacts of it, the numbers there that you'll see that we got from the funding agencies left a little bit of a gap. The wastewater utility fund that you see on there was enough to fill in the gap, however, when I went back and looked at these numbers, the bid actually came in at $10,0215?
Million.
I'm sorry, $10 million, yeah, that would have been a nice time, $10,215,000. The number that was shown there actually has a 5% contingency, so that number actually gets reduced by about $510,000. To talk about the agencies, we reached out to Soral. We received an increase for inflation last year of approximately $1.5 million, which brought that number up to the 5.784232, and from talking with them, since this all transpired, we believe there's going to be another inflationary increase of the 721,684, and they've also indicated there's a possibility of a contingency fund of additional 426. So when you add up those numbers, the gap gets reduced to about $429,000, and then by talking with FDEP, they received more funds from the state, they indicated that there should be some supplemental funding available to us, but until we got to this point, we've applied for it, we haven't got a formal answer, but we do feel confident based on our conversations that there should be more some money available through the granting agencies. So basically, the whole goal is to try and limit the city's expense here. With that, with the bid coming down low and everything I just said, I'm here to recommend that you approve and authorize our city manager to execute an agreement with Salt Cross Inc. for an amount of $10,215,000 plus our 5% owner contingency of $510,750 for a total not to exceed amount of $10,725,750, and I'm sure after all that, I have some questions, so I'm here to answer them the best I can.
Thank you, Mr. Petroni, Mr. Frampton?
Thank you, Mayor. Mark, with the unfortunate septic dis sewer incident we had with the company, where we put the lowest bidder, I'm concerned with a memo from Infrastructure Solutions Services where it says that the city, at the city's request, bid alternatives were not reviewed for consideration within the scope of the work for the project. Why did we do that and why didn't we allow them to bid alternatives? What was the reason?
Well, the bid alternatives we put in there was, we're hoping to see if there was a huge decrease from what we have seen out there, some of them.
But it says that we requested they not be reviewed.
Well, we talked it over with the engineer of record, I don't know if they got into it, when we have, when the bid came in, we had them start vetting the contractor, so I think what that means is they didn't really talk to the contractor about those bid alts. We talked internally about it, and we felt that everything that was in at this price from where we were from the previous bids, we weren't going to even address the bid alts and just go with this particular number.
And it also talks, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, we, being a little gun shy from how high the number was the first bid, we had created with the engineering firm, we had created the three bid alts with the idea that if the bids came in high, some of those items we might be able to do ourselves later, and so we created the bid alt as a way to possibly bring it down. The good news was the number came in good, the other, kind of the bad news or the neutral news, if you will, the items that we bid altered, we thought would be a significant savings, and it turned out that there wasn't much savings at all with the bid alts, so.
So we reviewed it, we didn't have this company review it?
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't go into a review process of the bid alts with the engineering firm, because it, because the bids came in where they did, and there wasn't a significant savings to take those out, because there are items that are needed, they're just items that we possibly could have done at a later date on our own.
And the other, it looks like a total of eight references were given for the project, but we were only able to get four? And what, why couldn't we confirm the other four?
Well, we were trying to, to, we have some.
And is that from two to four for each company that we're talking about here?
We just went with the references for the lowest Salt Cross Inc.
So there was eight, but we only were able to confirm?
We only got contacted back by four. The bids came in on the 12th, and my staff report had to become on.
That's not concerning at all to you?
Well, it is, but all the four were very positive. The engineering firm that we worked with has worked with this company too, they felt very confident. In this day and age, again, from where we were at 16 million, with all the work we put in to get down to this number, and everybody felt pretty comfortable, and I could tell you, there's probably no more, nobody here more gun shy than me, after what happened on the subject of Soral, but we think we got that one resolved now too, but.
And any idea why it's a significant gap of like 1.75 million for the next highest one, and then you have a gap like, three of them are kind of in the same range, and then one was a little higher price? Any, any idea why such a large gap? I mean.
I wish I did, Mrs. Adams and I go back and forth on most of these, I don't ever know what some of the engineers do, I will tell you, I spent a lot of time with Salt Cross on the first round, and then they came up and took a couple of contracts and didn't even bid the first round. When they came back on this one, I spent equally amount of time on the site, talking with them, they were really engaged, asked a lot of questions that we answered online, and I don't know, maybe they are a little bit hungrier than some of the other ones, it's really hard for me to answer that, especially when you're in a little bit situation where you've got to accept it, just we've got to try and vet them the best we can.
Well, we kind of heard with this last unfortunate case we had, that maybe that's why that company came in a little lower, because they didn't do the proper work that they were supposed to do, and then the next company that came in was a higher, higher bid, and we said, well, maybe that was because the other company wasn't doing what they're supposed to do. I'm guessing that we're going to stay on top of these guys.
I'm on top of everybody, our staff, our inspectors on top of everybody, the subject of Soral, I think we explained, they had just done a successful project with us, and they came in low bid. I didn't see a big change until the merger took place where they got acquired, and a lot of personnel that was there was not there anymore, and that's when things started, I think, started going south.
Hopefully, these guys don't get bought out.
It's, I don't know, I mean, we tried to do the best we can with what we have. The engineer felt confident, I mean, the fact that the engineer of record has worked with this company more than I have, I think it was good, but we were on a little bit of a tight schedule with two days to get all the references, and some people don't, I mean, we can have three weeks where I've had some vetting and I don't get a phone call back from people, they just don't return a phone call, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Bentley?
Thank you. Mark, we, I think, have about a 2.1 million city contribution right now, or our fund has that. You kind of mentioned that the numbers may come down, what was, maybe you said and I didn't get it, what do you think that 2.1 stands a chance of coming down to realistically?
Well, if you take what we have conversations with Soral right now, there's an inflationary increase of the 721,684 for budget, I think we're going to get that number. They also said there's a really good chance of that 426, so you got 1.1, that cuts it almost in half, and I believe that brings it down to roughly into the 429 range is the gap. So we talk with FDP all the time, they've received a lot more state funding too for all these projects. I'm not going to say we're going to get it for sure, for certain, but if we're at the 429 gap from where we were with 2 million on that and the utility is there, I think we're, we have a project where we didn't have a project, so we're, I think, way ahead of the game. We're going to, we're going to do everything we can before we get everything done to try and get that to zero for the city, but.
Thank you.
Pretty substantial.
All right, thank you very much. Any other questions for Mr. Petroni? Anyone care to make a motion? Ms. McGuire?
If I did, okay, I'll make the motion that we approve and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement with Salt Cross for a total not to exceed $10,725,750.
All right, thank you, we have a motion on the floor from Ms. McGuire, I'm sorry, Mr. Gaylord.
I'll second.
I might let you speak first before I commit you, so thank you very much. We have a motion on the floor from Ms. McGuire, we have a second from Mr. Gaylord, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed say nay. Motion carries seven zero. Did you vote nay? I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mr., all right, six zero, motion carries six zero.
We're losing votes left and right.
Thank you. Well, I was going to call Chief Esteban, Mr., I'm sorry, Commander Romano? Romano got the.
Yes, Mayor.
I want to make sure I get the.
Romano.
I know the Romano is correct, I want to make sure I got the rank right. Okay, thank you.
I'm Tony Romano, I'm commander of Criminal Investigations and Support Services. So good evening, Mayor, and council members, I'm back. A couple of weeks ago, a couple of weeks ago, I mentioned we wanted a camera for our investigation unit, there were some questions and some concerns I was not able to answer, so hopefully tonight I'm a little bit better answering your questions. I think the biggest numbers we were talking about before was 2.1 megapixel, and that seems small, and it does seem small. When I think of that, I think of like a Nokia phone back in the day, taking photos. So in this case here, we're dealing with a PTZ camera, and that 2.1 is really important for still cameras, right, that is what we're looking for, megapixel, but when we're talking about cameras and PTZ, we're talking about resolution, we want a really good resolution. And the camera we're talking about, it's a 2.1 megapixel, but it has 30 times resolution, and then I know a lot now about the video that I did before, we're talking about digital or optical zoom on these cameras. This camera that we're looking at is a optical zoom, which does 30 times, and it'll have 2.1 megapixel, so it won't get blurry. And I think we added some documentation, if you have not seen it already, this is kind of a example of what I'm talking about, you'll see a digital zoom up here and an optical zoom, and this is what we're looking at for optical zoom. I also reached out to agencies in Florida that have got this product, nothing good, but good things with them, some, one agency I spoke with bought six of them, really good customer service, they really enjoy it, it's helped out with their investigations, so that was really positive. Hope I answered some of the questions.
Mr. Frampton?
Thank you, Mayor. I had asked for some comparisons, I know I went online and I did a quick search, five-minute search, and came up with three different companies, one of them being Crime Point. What comparisons did you do on this and what they look like?
So it's hard to find exactly what I wanted here, what we're looking at, because of, it's got a solar source, it's very unique. I did find a couple of cameras that were small, didn't, the same capability of 2.1 megapixel, that's the industry standard for these types of cameras, they're really looking at more resolution than megapixels, because it doesn't take still shots, it's looking for video.
What company was that?
The company I'm talking about?
The one that you said you, the other company you.
Yeah, I have a few here, let me get it for you, that I looked online.
And while you're looking, what's PTZ stand for?
It's to move it around, until zoom.
Okay. So PTZ really doesn't have anything to do with the quality of the camera, right? So it just means it can move, right? Right?
One of the companies is BZB Gear, Bravo Zulu Bravo Gear, I can send you the link if you like.
I was just wondering if it was one of the ones, I, there was covert law enforcement that popped up and AppTechs, and I was just curious if you checked out.
If you notice here, it's small, like the one I'm looking at, but doesn't have the capabilities we're looking for.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for Commander Romano? What are the wishes of the council? Mr. Bentley?
Thank you, I had to make a motion that we approve the purchase of this $10,000 camera, $9,000, $99,000 camera.
Don't give Commander Romano an extra dollar.
Ms. McGuire?
Second.
All right, thank you, we have a motion on the floor from Mr. Bentley to approve buying this camera, we have a second by Ms. McGuire, all those in favor please signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed signify by saying nay, motion carries six zero.
Thank you very much.
See, I remembered this time, thank you. All right, thank you, go shopping. Okay, D, 8D, Dedication of Water Systems, Sunrise Estates.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the companion to the dedication that, the bill of sale that we did a few weeks ago for the sewer system. This is the same neighborhood. Pulte Home Company has developed the area. It's the Sunrise Estates neighborhood, which used to be known as Greenleaf. They've developed the sewer system and the water system. The sewer system was ready a bit earlier, so they presented us the bill of sale for that, which you approved, I think about a month ago. This is for the water system that I'm asking you to approve today. And the water system fixed assets that they developed earn the amount of $1,176,193.87. And that includes mostly the underground water pipes that are being added to the city system. So the assets will be added to our city's fixed revenue. And that's just a paper, a paper addition. They don't pay us any money. We don't pay them any money. But it does add value to our fixed assets. And I would ask you to approve Resolution 2025-09 to accept the water system into our city system.
All right, thank you. Mr. Bentley?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Frampus?
Thank you, Mayor. Make a motion we approve Resolution Number 2025-09 as written.
All right, Ms. Adams?
I'll second.
All right, thank you. We have a motion on the floor from Mr. Frampus. A second from Ms. Adams. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries six zero. That was easy. All right, council reports. Ms. McGuire?
Got it. We had Candace Blake.
That's under management reports.
So most of council just got back from the Florida League of Cities Conference in Orlando. That was a very informative conference, the only word I can use for it. There were a couple of sessions that I attended that gave me, that kind of made me think a little bit differently. They had their like Cities 101 class and like Elected Officials 101 class. So that was nice to attend as one of the two, you know, new elected officials up here on the dais. But that is my report.
All right, thank you. Mr. Frampus?
Thank you, Mayor. Agree, the Florida League of Cities Conference was good as usual. Every year we go and we learn things, so it was good there. And I just wanted to say that National Night Out was a big hit. We all had a good time. We saw, what, six communities, I think? And, and everybody was very receptive of the PD and, and us as well. So it was a good night out. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. I will also, on, on my list, I highlighted National Night Out. It was very well done from our, our city staff and from the police department perspective. Just heard from residents that they really enjoyed us and they enjoy, I think, every year. It seems like we always have communities that are willing to participate, so that's nice. I will also echo, I thought the League of Cities Conference was well done. In the next two weeks or so, I think the deadline for submitting committee signups is coming very soon. Usually it happens before the conference and then we get our assignments right after. The deadline was pushed this year. So if you haven't submitted that, please do so. Because I know that the, the new League of Cities president is looking, getting those committees assigned to get them out soon since session will be starting. And we want to make sure, the email already went out about the three legislative policy committee meeting times and dates. So if you're, if you're signed up for a committee and you want to attend, just make sure you're watching your email for those things. I also made a note of the Stop on Red campaign with the TPO. I know a couple of us had gone out there. It was very interesting from my perspective because originally knowing the Hollywood Boulevard and 192 intersection, I know many of us travel that intersection on a regular basis. And we've seen the work that has been put into the improvements for that. And at first I thought, man, we're going to put a bunch of people on the side of the road waving signs telling you to stop on red. That's going to be a distraction, causing more of an issue than solving the problem. But, you know, you could see drivers at the lights paying attention, at least the ones who would wave or be friendly. I will also note, kudos to our police department. They had officers stationed at areas of that intersection. And I watched at least four people run that intersection in the, what, first hour that we were there? So it's something to be said, they were, they were right there educating people and, and letting them know like, we are there at that intersection because it's a high incident area. And so I just thought that was, it was, it was better than I had expected it to be. And then also eye opening, realizing just how many people either don't pay attention or are busy and things like that. And we don't want that in our city. We want everybody to be safe. I also thought the council workshop, we had that after the last council meeting. It was very productive. I enjoyed our conversation. I think it comes up every time we have a workshop, Mr. Ody, that council enjoys them. And we'd like to see potentially having more of them scheduled to try to get some things done or brainstorm new ideas where it's not necessarily the easiest thing to add on to this type of meeting when we have ideas for the city and we want to discuss them in a public meeting as part of the council, as opposed to, I know you really enjoy our one-on-one meetings with all of my ideas, but it's nice to share with the rest of council. On that note, if you also, like me, came with a list of, of notes from the conference about things that might be beneficial to the city, I encourage you to schedule a meeting with Mr. Ody to share those ideas because I will be looking forward to our meeting. We also had the last League of Cities meeting a few weeks ago. Last, since the last council meeting, we had a League of Cities meeting. It was very well done on the north end of the county. The email already went out about the upcoming meeting. So just a heads up if you did not RSVP to that and you wish to attend. And then the last two things I wanted to highlight, if you didn't see in your mailbox, there was a copy of the letter that went out to residents who could be impacted with the water treatment plant. And I thought that was a very well-done communication on the city's behalf because it, it educated residents about what's going to be going in, how they could be, you know, necessarily impacted. They're going to really try hard to minimize noise and impacts to any residents during the daytime work hours. But read, just reading the letter, I thought it was very well done and I appreciate the communication. I also did not get to bring it up when Waste Management was in front of us. But the September, October newsletter includes that nice Waste Management graphic right on the front, educating residents about the residential services that are included, but they have to request them. So the information is getting out there. Additionally, in there, you'll see the flyer for Heritage Day and that information is coming out for our residents as well as the advisory board. We did approve the two students. However, we do have additional vacancies that I would still like to encourage students to get involved. That way we have hopefully as close to a full council as we can as the school year is starting and we want to get the ball rolling with them. So I, I appreciate that that is still included, but I wanted to share those with council. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Bentley?
No report, Mayor.
All right, Mr. Bentley, Mr. Gaylord?
Yeah, I will just echo all of the sentiments made by Councilmember Adams. The Florida League of Cities meeting we had was very good. The National Night Out meeting we, we had was very good. And I really do enjoy the council workshops, Mr. Ody. So I'm looking forward to, looking forward to the next one. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, I guess it's my turn. So I also did all of these things that we've been mentioning up here. And I thought that the conference was absolutely terrific, absolutely loved it. The speakers were really, really spot on. And, you know, we always try to bring something home. If you remember one thing, what would you remember from, from this? So I have a slide in it and I'm really trying to do this. It said, what's it like on the other side of me? So I'm really trying to pay attention to that. And I know we all are be able to see that it's like for you to be on the other side of me. Isn't that the way we all take it? I sent that slide to my husband and you know what he responded? Left or right? I never looked at it that way. But part of the other part of that same speaker was, that was saying, you know, what if you saw different people differently? So I guess I have a differently example right in front of me. So I never, ever thought anybody would look at it that way. So I just wanted to mention, that's the one thing I took away. What's it like on the other side of me? There was one other thing I wanted to mention, which has nothing to do with that, is Space Coast League of Cities. Mr. Bentley's been a representative on Space Coast for a long time. Ms. Adams is already on that particular board and she's coming up and she'll be president next year. All right, I've already been president of that. And in talking with Mr. Bentley, is there someone else who would like to be the representative on that board? It means you'd need to go to the meetings and, Ms. Fultz is the alternate right now.
We can ask her because she's not here.
Yes, and I don't know that she would actually want to because it's a, it is a lot of travel all the way from Titusville to Malabar or Grant. So it is some driving every month. So is there anyone else who would like to sit in that seat?
It would be coming to the meetings a little bit early. Our Board of Directors meets before the general meeting.
By 4:45?
Yeah, it's about 5:45. And so that's where we discuss all the Space Coast League of Cities business. You have a vote as part of the board, things like that.
I wish I could, but I have conflict.
All right, Mr. Gaylord?
Yeah, I'll, I'll take it up. Take up the mantle.
Okay, that's pretty good because I was just about to tell Mr. Bentley that he can't go because nobody else stepped up.
Allow Mr. Bentley to step down.
Okay, all right. So can we do a letter to the Space Coast pointing Mr. Gaylord as our representative? Okay, we don't need a vote or anything on that, right? We just, we just appoint?
Since, since Helen is the alternate, shouldn't you give her first crack at it if? I mean, I don't know if she goes every month or not, but I didn't know if that would be fair or not.
Okay, we'll, we'll do that. I'll give her a call when I get home and, okay. All right, in the meantime, if Ms. Fultz does not want to be the primary, then we'll have Mr. Gaylord as a primary and we'll keep Ms. Fultz as the alternate. Okay, so now management reports. Candace? Thank you for waiting for the entire meeting to do this. Thank you.
I'm always happy to. So good evening, Mayor and council again. I am here to give you your third quarter financials. This is the last report we give until we get the audit. Usually around April, March, April timeframe. So I will just kind of hit over some highlights of it and then I'm available for any questions that you have. So looking at our revenues, we're mostly on track with where we expect to be. When you look at some of our funds, like our stormwater and our wastewater, they look like they're trending very low, but that is because they're a reimbursement grant. So the BNR project that was just approved tonight, that's a reimbursement grant. We haven't started the project. We haven't taken in any money for that. So that, the Septic to Sewer, and then on the stormwater side, we also have Westbrook. Do anticipate bringing to council, Mr. Ody bringing to council in September, a budget amendment for the stormwater. Because that Westbrook project is substantial completion this fiscal year and we did not think that it was going to get done that quickly. So we will need to recognize that those expenses and revenues, again, reimbursement grant. So most of that money we will be getting back as well. But that's why those funds look a little odd. But we do fully anticipate, you know, all of that being covered. The water fund, if you look at that, that is right on track, excluding our end of year fund transfers we do and then the bond transfers that will also be happening. So those, but everything else for our charges for services, the water revenue, that sort of thing is right where I would expect it to be. On the expenditure side, our expenditures and encumbrances are at 121%, but that's because we do encumber those full projects. So our expenditures are only at 27%, but our operating expenditure, so your salaries, wages, your services, your supplies, materials, all of that, that's a 71%. We would expect 75%, so we're coming in a little bit under. But the capital, the capital projects, of course, skew those totals. So that's why I want to, I kind of like to break it down to show the, the core of what we're looking at there. But overall, when I'm looking over the budget, I fully expect our revenues to exceed our expenditures at the end of the year. So we are right where I would, would want us to be and fully expect everything to come out where it should. So if you have any questions, I'm available.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Frampus? No questions for Mr. Frampus. Do you have any questions, Mr. Frampus?
I'm happy to ask you questions, sir, if you would like.
Thank you, Mayor. When we were doing the stormwater adjustment, it stated in there that salaries are covered into that, out of that money. Or is that the full salaries of the person and is that reflected in these numbers?
Yeah, there's, there's partials, in the stormwater, there's partial salaries that come out of there from public work. So yeah, you have your streets and drainage, those employees, the supervisor, crew leaders, the maintenance workers, all of those are out of public works and partially out of stormwater because they do do a chunk of work out of stormwater.
Okay, and we do that across the board with the different Inc.?
Yeah, a lot, a lot of our employees are split between different funds, different accounts, that sort of thing, to kind of give a full representation of the work that they do.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any other lights. No other questions for Ms. Blake? Ms. Mr. Ody, you have a question for Ms. Blake?
Madam, Madam Mayor, does, does our city attorney have a report this evening?
No, no.
Oh, okay, I was going there next to her.
Then if the council would indulge me in ending this meeting with a, with a few comments, I would greatly appreciate it.
Well, I was coming to you next. You're part of management reports.
Thank you. It has been a great pleasure and honor.
Wait, wait, wait. If we don't hear these remarks, then we don't have to let her leave, right?
If it were only that true. If it were only that true. First and foremost, I want to thank your husband for his service. I wish you guys nothing but the best in your journey. It has been an honor working with you. You have done a fantastic job. Far exceeded my expectations and I really appreciate that. I think I speak for Tom and myself. Your dedication, nights, weekends, whenever we had a crisis, you're always there, you're always part of the team and we really appreciate that. A bonding, having a contractor fallout on us. We've been through some interesting things. You've kept all those records straight. You've kept all those dollars and cents in line. And the city is very thankful for your service. We appreciate you, Candace. This is Candace Blake's last council meeting.
No, there's no motion and there's no second, so no.
It has been my absolute pleasure, so.
Thank you, Candace. Okay, all right. All right, well then I'll give you a break and I'd ask you for your own management report. That is your report. And Mr. Carey, you have nothing for us? Okay, everything's running just fine in the city? All right, nothing else for the, for the, go to the organization. We'll adjourn the meeting.